Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. This is a special call meeting. I'm going to turn it right over to the attorney to show us, tell us what we have to do.
Mr. Mayor, I need to take the role if you will first.
Oh, that's, that, Deborah?
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Ficke, Commissioner Good.
I'm here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
I'm here.
You're here.
Here.
I'm here.
Thank you, Deborah. All right, Mr. Gordon?
You have a pledge, Mr. Mayor.
I got your pledge.
Oh, pledge, I'm sorry.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice today.
Thank you all. We've got, we've got some wives out here who's first ladies here. Ms. Schwartz is there? Good. Mr. Mark, how are you? Okay.
He's not a first lady.
No, he's not a first lady, yes.
First name.
All right.
Say, Attorney, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, the item before the commission this evening under SM-1, which references 24-0024, is discussion and possible action to address the District Four vacancy resulting from the resignation submitted by Commissioner Castillo pursuant to section 99.012 of the Florida statutes. As a matter of public record, this meeting has been legally convened. As you may recall, mayor and commission, on December 6th, the mayor and commission adopted a motion which directed the creation of the special meeting as if and when the District Four commissioner elected to resign to run, which the commissioner did. You, by virtue of the power vested in you as the mayor, Mr. Mayor, confirmed the, the fact that the vacancy and the issue regarding the resignation was filed, called the special meeting. This has been properly posted, noticed, in accordance with chapter 286 of the Florida statutes. And to that extent, mayor and commission, you have a valid special meeting before you on the item before the item being specified tonight on the agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Schwartz?
I have a point of legal inquiry and clarification.
Let's do it.
City attorney, in the backup on this item, is your memorandum?
May I respond, Mayor?
Yes or no?
The answer is yes, and the memorandum was dated December the 22nd, and it's for the record, it's city attorney memorandum number 2023-119.
All right, thank you, city attorney. Once the, once the resignation was activated, I had queried through the city manager to the city clerk, some archived documents that are public records, but because they're so old, they're not available on the internet for public view. And I feel it's important that I submit this into the record tonight so that we can have all of the facts and only the facts on the table. So what I'd like to be able to do, city attorney, you were copied on all email transmissions, correct?
Generally, yes.
And you received the same information that I received, is that correct?
I can't know exactly what you received, but I received the numerous documents.
You were copied on, on, on all of it, okay. So what I'd like to do, Mayor, before we get started, is to be able to place these items into the record so we can have a discussion, the public gets to learn a little bit more about it. So with that being said, city attorney, I'd like to first ask you about the minutes from the June 2003 meeting. And allow me to pull that up on my screen. I'm going to switch it over so we can have it live. Need to swing the tab over to the screen. Hold on here. If technology works for me. And I'm, there we go. All right, so I want to open this up for everyone to see. These minutes, Eileen Tesh was our city clerk at the time. City attorney, were you the city attorney at the time?
My name is on the document.
It is, yes, great, okay. And the elected officials at the time were Mayor Ficchetti, rest in peace Vice Mayor Bill Armstrong, rest in peace Commissioner Ben Forandino, rest in peace Commissioner District Four Sue Katz, and Commissioner Three, District Three Frank Ordis. The addendum for that night, this was the 17th of December 2003, motion to accept the resignation of Sue Katz, Commissioner for District Four, declaring a vacancy in the district with commission seat, instructing the city clerk to advertise for the remainder of the term of the District Four commissioner to be filled March 9th, 2004. It was Commissioner Katz who moved to accept the resignation, declaring the vacancy, and instructing the city clerk to advertise the remainder of the term to be filled at the March 9th election. Commissioner Ordis seconded the motion, and Commissioner Katz went on to state that it's been an honor and a privilege representing the residents of the city in District Four, offering her resignation, and now she's looking forward to new challenges in service. Some members of the public spoke, and then the item passed unanimously. Also at this meeting was the opening of the District Four seat special election. Do we recall that evening, city attorney?
Minutes speak for themselves. If I was there, I remember it.
Okay. And so there was a, there was a, there was a vote, and the District Four special election was approved. Qualifying period was the same as all the other candidates for that election. As a matter of fact, District Three Commissioner Frank Ordis was a part of that election in March of 2004, and successfully won reelection. Sue Katz won the election. She was sworn in, first organizational meeting in April, I'm sorry to strike that, in March. She was excused due to illness the first meeting of April, and she never returned to the commission as she tragically passed away. Thus, that was on April 17th, 2004, triggering something that the city has never experienced before, which was the death of a mayor while in office. Ben Forandino was the vice mayor at the time. He was elevated to interim mayor. Commissioner designate, Vice Mayor designate, Ordis split over as the vice mayor, and there was an appointment by, by the commission to temporarily fill the District One seat in which Ben Forandino had gone up into the interim mayor role. What I wanted to show you now is a discussion, six years later, of the, let me go one second, of the next time that a vacancy had occurred, some of the challenges that we had as the, with our charter. Let me go and slide that over. Now, I'm not sure how we're going to work the audio on this.
At any time. And this is the type of thing that I'd like to refer, and it happens, it's going to happen, to Charter Review Board, because I don't think this commission- it's going to happen, to Charter Review Board, because I don't think, this commission should be without a member for any reason at any time, and I'd like to see them work that out. I don't have a solution, but appointing is...
You may ask Commissioner, ask, you know, an interim appointment type thing or something like that, or whatever.
Something like that, I mean, we can let that mesh out and make their presentation.
I just, I just would like to see any, any district not have some representation on...
Mr. Shaker? Julie, how do you distinguish this situation from the situation when, um, Mayor Katz passed away, and the vice mayor became the mayor, there was a vacancy, and I was appointed as an interim commissioner for like two and a half months or something, whatever it was? How does that, how long was more than 180 days, I believe?
Right, the, the specific difference here is simply the fact that, as you remember, there was a memorandum that we provided to each of you, that, and under your charter, it provides for how to fill a vacancy in the event that there's more than 180 or less than 180 days remaining in the interim period. And what the problem was is that we had a vice mayor that's elevated under that circumstance, whereas that's not the case here. Um, there were different circumstances surrounding that, as well as the fact of the interim 180 versus more than and less than 180 days.
More than 180 days?
There is difference, there's, there's different procedures for filling the vacancy of a mayor, elevating a vice mayor, and then appointing for an interim for the...
That's very specific and...
Yeah, and, and that's one process. This is a different process having to do with filling a vacancy of a candidate or a commissioner. That's separate and apart from filling the vacancy for the mayor.
I trust you don't take the word for it. Okay. In further discussion? All right, and I would, um, all in favor of I?
All right.
Opposed? I do have it.
This is the type of thing that I'd like to...
Okay, so at this, at this meeting back in June of 10, um, this was, um, to address a District Four vacancy, a known vacancy that was going to occur. Um, the, there was a county seat that became available, um, the District Four Commissioner resigned, the District Four Commissioner lost the primary in August. A few days after the August primary election, uh, the District Four Commissioner reapplied for a January 11, I'm sorry, January, um, 2019, uh, 2011 election. The city was unable, City Attorney, to, uh, fill the vacancy because it was not a mayor's City Attorney, the, in 2012, the electorate through the Charter Review Board that Commissioner Jack McCloskey had mentioned in this video, uh, had suggested, and the commission approves for the electorate to, to, um, vote on it, is the ability to fill a vacancy that did not include the mayor. Now, our charter has not changed outside of that with respect to elections in over 40 years, is that correct, City Attorney?
That's generally correct.
And there's only one reference to when a municipal election is held under our charter, and that is the second Tuesday of March in even years, is that correct, City Attorney?
That provision is in the city's charter.
And there's no other reference to any other date in our charter, is that correct, City Attorney?
Without looking any further, this evening, I, I believe that you're correct.
Okay. So there's a Florida statute, 101.75, Florida statute 101.75, that actually provides guidance to municipalities like ours. What is 101.75, City Attorney?
If I may further respond, Mr. Mayor, 101.75 is a Florida statute contained in what's called the State of Florida Election Code. The State of Florida Election Code is a provision under state law, beginning in Chapter 98 and ending in Chapter 106. Chapter 101, 101 falls within the middle of the provisions, and the title of section 101.75 is municipal elections, semi-collum change of dates for cause, and there are several subsections within 101.75, 101.75 that, uh, are noted in the statute, last amended in 2011.
Okay, thank you, City Attorney. So when there was a special election for the District Three seat, and the mayor's seat to fill the remaining term of Commissioner, District Three Commissioner Frank Ordis's term, and Mayor Sue Katz's term, 101.75 was the trigger in order for the city to move the election to, uh, August, is that correct?
I can't say for sure without looking at the minutes, but that, that could be correct.
Okay.
I can't, I can't specify that answer without looking at the record.
Okay, so that would have been the first election, uh, in our city's history, that would have been August. Now, since the District Two, Three, and Mayor's seat by charter is the second Tuesday of March in even years, the city commission in 2008 had an election in January, the city commission in 2012 had a municipal mayor's race in January. The commission had a special election to, uh, fill the remaining term of District Four in January of 2011. The city commission changed the date of March, the second March date, to be the third Tuesday in March of 2016, March of 2020, and March of 2024. Is that correct, City Attorney?
If the record reflects that, then I wouldn't dispute it.
All lawful elections, correct, City Attorney?
They're lawful to the extent that they have never been challenged and exist today as final decisions being made by the electorate of the city of Pembroke Pines.
101.75 also allows the city to set, um, qualifying period along with the election day, is that correct, City Attorney?
It might be helpful, Commissioner, through the mayor, if you wouldn't mind, that I can read to you the section that you may be referring to, and if that's not the case, I can certainly stand down and you can correct me, but...
Section three, I believe.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, go ahead.
May I read, Mayor? Thank you. There's a section in 101.75 which says the following, notwithstanding any provision of local law or municipal charter, the governing body of the municipality may, by ordinance, move the date of any municipal election to a date concurrent with any statewide or countywide election. The dates for qualifying for the election moved by the passage of such ordinance shall be specifically provided for in the ordinance. The term of office for any elected municipal official shall commence as provided by the relevant municipal charter or ordinance. That's subsection three of 101.75.
Thank you, City Attorney. Uh, Mayor, at your discretion, um, I'm prepared to, uh, make a motion to direct the city attorney's office to draft an ordinance for first reading on January 17th, 2024, which is the first meeting back from break, pursuant to section 101.75 of Florida statute, setting a special election to fill the District Four vacancy concurrent with the November 5th, 2024 general election, and to establish a qualifying period for that special election to run from noon on March 1st, 2024 through noon, March 15th, 2024. And Mayor, that is twice the amount of time qualifying periods have generally been given here in this, uh, here in the city of Pembroke Pines.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by the vice mayor. Discussion and the motion.
Can I have the motion repeated again?
Sure. Sure, absolutely. Motion to direct the city attorney's office to draft an ordinance for first reading on January 17th, 2024 pursuant to section 101.75 Florida statute, setting a special election to fill the District Four vacancy concurrent with the November 5th, 2024 general election, and to establish qualifying period for the special election to run from noon on March 1st, 2024 through noon on March 15th, 2024.
Question? Question? So, so, so the motion is different than the, the motion that's in front of us now? This is a... Yes, it is, it's called in November, that's what you just talked about. This is a substitute motion?
Mr. Mayor, Attorney, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Quiet, please.
The item before the commission, as directed at the December 6th meeting, was to schedule a special meeting of the city commission to discuss and possibly take action to address the District Four vacancy. There's no motion before the commission unless you offer one up this evening.
Correct.
So there's no, there's no currently pending motion, it's discussion and possible action which could be, um, implemented by appropriate motion.
So Commissioner, Commissioner Schwartz's motion is to move the District Four vacancy, which will not occur until after Election Day this coming March, to November of next year, is that correct? Commissioner Schwartz?
Uh, the motion's read into the record.
I'm asking for clarification. Your motion is to move the District Four election to November of next year?
That's only half of the motion, the other half is to set the qualifying period from March 1st to 15th.
I'll get to the other half, but, but is that, is that half correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, your qualifying period, you mentioned March, why would the qualifying period be in March for an election in November?
May I, um...
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. Um, it's actually, um, it's, it's logical to do it that way. The, the residents want to get to know their candidates. The qualifying period, uh, actually begins one week before the special, before the early voting in, uh, the presidential primary of this year. It'll give the electorate the opportunity to meet and greet candidates, that's number one. Uh, number two, um, the, um, if no one qualifies, um, I'm, I'm sorry, if we have a, if we have a, if we have an individual who qualifies during that time period, uh, we will have a vacancy that the charter allows us to fill. Commissioner Good, um, back in 2020, uh, had made a query, I'm not sure if it was a motion, but definitely a query, he goes, listen, we'll appoint you if you don't run for office. So it'll become a non-political, uh, potentially, uh, someone who's not running for the actual election to actually be appointed, so that it, so that you take politics out of, uh, potential appointment. The, the residents of District Four, um, have had, um, have had an opportunity since June of this year, when I had brought forward an item to prepare a resolution encouraging the District Four Commissioner, um, run for mayor, just drop your resignation sooner rather than later. Uh, Sue Katz did it on the 15th of December. Um, this resignation came in on the 22nd. The, the, the qualifying period, working through the city attorney's office, 15 days is what Palm Beach does. And so I wanted to give the, um, electorate a couple things. Well in advance notice that there's a qualifying period more than, um, 60 days from now. Number two, during that qualifying period, ample time to have, um, those who have already qualified, meet and greet potential voters at early voting. And three, to be able to have, um, the ability for this commission to, um, have a, the ability to, to represent people in a way that we know where we stand. We know there's going to be a vacancy with, with a November election. It will occur on the 3rd of April, regardless of the outcome. So there's only going to be four commissioners in April. Mm-hmm. You need three to make anything happen. Mm-hmm. That includes appointments. Mm-hmm. Or potentially interview appointments. Mm-hmm. So we saw what happened last time. It was, um, in, in my opinion, it could have been handled differently. Certainly Commissioner Good had experienced, um, a vacancy inside of 180 days. That didn't work out so well either. So there was a precedent set 20 years ago. Sue Katz resigned, a candidate filed his intent to run on October the 28th, 2003. City commission, uh, did not set the date yet for the March election. Sue Katz hadn't resigned yet, but there was an intent to run. Um, back in 1977, City Attorney, according to your memo, there was a vacancy. So we're going back over 45 years of legal precedent to have elections in March. The people, the people that asked for a November election, and they've asked to get to know potential candidates.
All right, I'm, I'd like to... Commissioner, listen to him, please, you want to...
So you asked me, you asked me...
Commissioner? I'd like to reclaim my time. He answered my question. Commissioner?
Let me...
He's not done. Okay.
I'm wrapping this up. So you asked why the qualifying period? That's the reason, to give the people the most opportunity to get to know what their future leaders are going to look like.
Okay. Thank you very much for, for that answer. The traditional way that, uh, elections are called in the state of Florida is that the, uh, about two months before the Election Day, there's a qualifying period. And the reason for that is so that people who maybe, what you want to do is you want to create the biggest group of, of people possibly interested competing for the position. By accelerating the, um, um, the qualifying period to this March, you cut off that opportunity among folks that might want to run. The way it works in Pembroke Pines is that when somebody intends to run for a, um, a position, they submit a notice of intent, which allows them to open up an account, begin to raise money, and to begin to run. And then the qualifying occurs much later in the process, and that's strategically done to give people who may have an interest in running enough time to run. The voters aren't cheated out of who might be running because the notices of intent are submitted. I don't see the need to re-engineer, um, the election process. There's been a lot of engineering with election processes lately. I like the motion better than this March because foisting a last-minute election on the residents of District Four, uh, has obviously, and I predicted this, um, uh, created a problem. Folks feel it's, uh, it's just not enough time for them to consider, uh, and candidates to decide whether it is that they want to run. But here's the issue, here's the real issue with the motion. We don't have to make that decision today. That's a decision that we should be making down the road. The issue before us, and I'm glad to see this evolution away from March because it makes the conversation easier, this March thing simply is not workable, and it was a bad concept from the, from, from the start. The question before us now is whether or not this election will be held in August or November. Can't hold, excuse me, you cannot hold an election in August. Uh, excuse me? That hasn't been... By the S O E. Okay, that hasn't been... City Attorney? Excuse me, that hasn't been... City Attorney? Hey, can... We're gonna, oh, we're gonna get the facts, and the fact... We're gonna get the fact. And you said August. There's no need for you to interrupt me, I've been doing this a long time. No, I am interrupting. So, so don't let me get it out. City Attorney? Commissioner, we're gonna get this all right. Okay. City Attorney, can we have an election in August?
At the meeting of December the 6th, Mayor and Commission, you may recall that we provided to you, uh, email legal advice from the General Counsel for the Broward Supervisor of Elections, which has made part of the backup for the December 6th meeting. As you, as you may remember, before you that evening was a, a proposed agreement by the supervisor to perform, uh, election services for this coming year. That being said, the county attorney's office concluded based upon their analysis that, and with the support of their client, who supported the answer, uh, that to the extent that there would be municipal elections in 2024, that they would be available to municipalities in a month of, uh, March or in the month of November, and that they would not provide ballot access, not just for, uh, issues of electing persons to office, but also for, um, initiatives, public initiatives, being, uh, bond referendum, whatever the case may be.
Thank you for putting that under record.
So the, there is, there is in the backup from the December 6th meeting, the legal advice and the decision made by Joe Scott as the supervisor to, to essentially not provide ballot access to municipalities in August.
Okay, and may, may I continue? No, you can continue now with the record. Thank you very much. And that decision that was made by the supervisor of elections is not the law, it's a, simply a determination that he made that can be reviewed either by the courts or by the Division of Elections, correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Take the response of the Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, if I may? The answer is that we know that there is in fact a, a countywide election in August, that's fact, it's, it's provided for by state law, it's primaries... It's, it's provided for by state law, it's primaries.
That's not my question.
Okay, but I'll try to answer if you rephrase it, please.
The question is that the determination made, the administrative determination made the sup, made by the Supervisor of Elections can be reviewed and potentially overturned either by a court or by the Division of Elections, correct?
Upon the proper challenge by the proper plaintiffs. There could be a challenge.
Uh-huh. And, and the city of Pembroke Pines would be a proper plaintiff?
It depends upon what the challenge looks like and how it, it actually is characterized. The answer is it's potentially possible.
Okay. So if we were to direct you, because we are under oath to protect and defend our charter, if we were to direct you to go to the Division of Elections, or to, to go to the Broward District Court, whichever you and your legal judgment felt was, was best, to challenge this unusual and precedent-breaking decision by the Supervisor of Elections about foreclosing to Broward Cities the use of his office in, uh, August elections, you would be capable, and the Division of Elections would be capable, of answering the question as to whether or not the Supervisor of Elections had that authority, correct?
If I may respond, Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
I, I'd like to assist by, by dividing the question for a moment. To, let me, let me explain for the record where the Division of Elections is and how they operate and what, what a circuit court litigation matter looks like. They're legally different. And let me clarify if I can for the Commissioner. The Division of Elections is the entity provided for in the State Election Code that essentially controls the election process statewide under Chapter 98 through 106, as I mentioned earlier. There's a provision in Chapter 106 that provides that proper parties in the statute can make a request to the Division of Elections for a binding opinion that's binding on the request or with regard to interpreting the State Election Code. That is, that is a non-litigation-based request, much like an Attorney General's opinion or a formal ethics opinion from the Ethics Commission. The, the difference is that in an AG's opinion, the answer is persuasive only if given by the AG's office. On a DEO, it's actually binding on the person who made the request.
Right.
And similarly, issues regarding the Ethics Commission, if an individual such as a commissioner has an ethics issue under, under Chapter 112, it's not a commission question, it's an individual question of any one commissioner. It is also binding on the person. So to better answer your question, there's an A, and an A and a B to it. The A says if you were to direct us to make a request to the Division to interpret whether or not the supervisor in the issues that you described, um, regarding August ballot access is a valid approach, et cetera, uh, that's, that's, that's only one part of the, the question. The second part is the B question, sub-part B. Um, if, if the commission chose to litigate the issue against the supervisor, who as you know, is a constitutional officer in Florida and has plenary power with regard to the position of supervisor, controls the books, the records, the equipment and such like that, but the decision that was made in its in writing from the lawyers representing the supervisor, who we respect greatly, indicated that there would no, would not be ballot access.
I'm asking you whether the, the courts or the, um, Division of Elections has the authority to review the question, whether or not the Supervisor of Elections of Broward County has the legal authority to foreclose Pembroke Pines from holding a charter, a, a, uh, an election in August that they're going to hold anyway pursuant to our charter? Do they have that authority?
So Mayor, respond, Mayor. The answer, the best answer on the question to the Division of Elections is you can raise the question, whether they will answer the question is unknown to any one of us sitting on the day.
Point of order, point of order, point of order. Uh, we've already established that the only, uh, date in our charter is the second Tuesday of March. There's nothing in our charter that says anything about August, July, Thanksgiving, nothing.
No, sir, that's not correct. The, the charter says that?
Commissioner Schwartz, Commissioner Castillo, please don't interrupt. Commissioner Schwartz, finish.
As a matter of fact, City Attorney, um, in January of 2008, and in January 2012, this city commission moved its second March, second Tuesday in March election to January. But the Supervisor of Elections still held municipal elections in March on the second Tuesday in 2008 and 2012. As a matter of fact, in 2008, in 2008, uh, the commission, as a result of that, shorted four-year terms of Districts Two, Three, and the mayor by nearly six weeks. And in, in the, uh, 2016 election, this city commission actually extended Districts Two, Three, and the mayor's seat an additional 16 weeks because it went from January all the way to March.
Okay, your point is well taken.
All right, can I, can I? Sam?
Yes, ma'am.
You and I have discussed on numerous occasions with your attorneys that the city of Pembroke Pines has the authority to direct you to appeal the August determination made by the Supervisor of Elections, either to the courts or to the Division of Elections, correct?
Can I clarify if you will for the Mayor? Appeal is, appeal is, is not exactly the proper phrase. I know, I know what you mean, but I don't, I don't choose to have the record reflect a misstatement in the context of something as delicate as this.
What is the right term?
The right term is that if you, if you, if you as a city commission direct us to make a request to the Division of Elections to clarify that issue regarding the role and relationship of the supervisor?
Right.
We can draft that request.
Okay. And, and they have the authority to review that request?
To the extent that they have the jurisdiction, they can. And if they choose not to, they can also respond adversely.
And if they choose, and if they choose to do it, they can issue a new ruling which would change the equation, correct?
They could argue. I'm not suggesting giving it one, any particular ammunition here, but they could suggest they don't have jurisdiction to answer that question.
Okay. We are under, we are under an affirmative obligation by oath to defend and protect the charter of Pembroke Pines, correct?
You take an oath of office?
Yeah.
Under state law?
And that's included? Defend and protect the charter of?
Constitutional laws of the state of Florida and the charter and the code of ordinances of the city of Pembroke Pines.
Okay. Under, under the charter, you have opined several times that a vacancy which occurs sometime in, in April, the appropriate, by our charter, next, uh, 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 countywide election to be held would be, um, August, correct?
We stand by the opinion which was referred to in the beginning of our discussion this evening and your exchange on the subject matter. Our memo is in the record. Uh, we have suggested and have given our legal advice and guidance that the issue of when a vacancy is provided for is prospective in nature, and that's in the memorandum.
Okay. I believe that the sensible thing for us to do, uh, because we are not in a rush to set up the, uh, election now, there is no need to do that now. Uh, the vacancy doesn't occur until after election day in March, and thankfully, that point has shined through, and so folks are now talking about November. That's a step in the right direction. I think that what we should be doing is directing the city attorney to defend the charter. If the charter says that we should have this election less than 180 days into, um, um, August, we should question this. Because here's, here's the logic of it. The Supervisor of Elections is duty-bound to have an election in August and November. So it's hard to understand why they would care when the city of Pembroke Pines, which is paying for the election, interestingly enough, why they would care whether or not we add that to the ballot in August or November? But what they've told us is that, and we've tried to explain to them that our charter says it should be done in August, no later than August. And they've said, no, the new policy of the, of the Supervisor of Elections is that cities may not hold elections in August. No cities, not just us, no cities. And that the only time we will run elections for cities will be March or November.
Okay, Commissioner, can you wrap up, please?
So I don't see the point of acting on this now. I'm thankful that we're now talking about August or November in terms of an election date for that vacancy.
We are, we are, the motion is quite, the, Commissioner Castillo, the motion before us is for November.
Yeah.
Not August. You keep repeating August. August is not in this motion.
I think that, I think that the, that the motion should be?
Well, what you should think, you can also make another motion. The motion in front of us now is for November.
Well?
I keep reiterating?
I would like, I, I would like to make an amendment to the, to the motion.
City Attorney?
And the emotion?
Motion is in front of us?
And I would like to amend it.
City Attorney?
The, a motion to amend would be in order if it's, if it's made by the Commissioner and seconded for discussion.
Commissioner Castillo, I'll take the amendment.
Okay. So the amendment would be to hold the election for District Four in August or November, depending on the outcome of a review by the Division of Elections, and to hold, uh, the qualifying periods during the customary dates, uh, which would not be this March. There's no point of holding qualifying this March, though once the vacancy is announced, people can certainly file their letters of, of, um, of interest, um, uh, and, and open up campaigns and so forth. But I don't see the point of qualifying them in so precipitous a timeframe.
I mean, is there a second?
So that would be, that would be my motion. August or November, and in the meantime?
Is there a second?
Can I finish the, can I finish the motion, please? Without being interrupted?
It's not a motion.
It's an amendment. Can I finish that?
Well, the amendment you can finish. Get it right.
There's no need for you to be nasty.
Because you're not?
There's no need for you to be nasty.
City Attorney, okay? City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
I'm trying to make an amendment and you continue to?
City Attorney?
Bully me. Commissioner? Commissioner? City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We are running this meeting according to the Roberts rules, correct?
You are running the meeting pursuant to Roberts rules.
That is correct. So we are going by a, a motion that has been made, an amendment has just been made. My duty now is to call if there's a second to that amendment, correct?
I'm not finished discussing the amendment.
Is that, is that correct?
The Commissioner needs to finish the framing of the motion and the basis for it.
Commissioner Castillo, can you finish? Then we'll call for a second to your amendment.
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So, 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 so the point is, we should, we should not allow, without a challenge, the Supervisor of Elections to dictate to us when our elections are going to be. Otherwise, there shouldn't be a provision in the charter voted on by the people as to when they're going to have their elections. So we, this is an unusual decision made by this Supervisor of Elections, who I respect. But here's the thing, and here's the thing you need to know. One of two things is, is correct.
Point of order, Mayor, we, we need, we need a structured amendment, not a conversation. Make the structured amendment.
All right.
Give a second, and then we can have discussion on the amendment.
If I could, if I could complete my, my, uh, my, uh, I, I, I know you all have a certain way you want to go, but if, if I can be allowed the, the courtesy of completing my amendment. See, the point is, the point of this is, the people decide what the charter of the city?
Point of order, Mayor, we, we, we are outside the bounds of Roberts rules. The Commissioner either needs to make the motion of amendment?
Wow. Wow.
Listen, quiet! We're running this by Roberts rules. And if Roberts rule says the amendment should be tough, not going into a dissertation for an hour. The amendment is to be repeated again.
Sustained?
Caution, please. Go ahead, Commissioner, Commissioner Schwartz.
No, no, I'll let, I'll let the Commissioner?
Finish your amendment, Commissioner Castillo.
Complete the amendment.
Yeah, if I could, if, if I could ask my colleagues for a little bit of patience?
Well, a little bit of patience, you've called the amendment.
You've called this special, uh, uh, meeting during Christmas week, these people have shut it off.
No, 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 no.
Mayor?
City, no, quiet.
Okay.
City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I want you to say, tell the audience, the basis of why we had to call this meeting.
If I can, if I can restate the answer earlier, as I said, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, on December the 6th, by motion adopted by a majority of the commission, it was directed that as, if, and when the District Four Commissioner resigned to run, to run for the position of mayor, that there would be, there would be, by majority vote, a special meeting to be conducted, and the language specifically was, the motion to promptly and to timely set a special meeting of the Pembroke Pine City Commission, as if and when the District Commissioner and District Four formally files his resign to run letter under Section 99.012 FS, and to thereby authorize the city commission to then publicly conduct a review of same under the provisions of Section 286.0114, that's the sunshine law, and to further consider, consider setting a potential special election to be conducted, if at all, coincidental with the March 2024 general municipal election to fill the vacancy in Pembroke Pines Commission, District Four.
Point of, point of legal clarification, yeah?
And, and you said December 28th, because of the timing, was the time to call a special a minute, a meeting, correct?
Mayor, if you will, the commission as a collegial body decided clearly and unequivocally under the states, the states of, of sunshine law, that to provide proper notice and posting was something that you all endorsed to make sure that it did not get, uh, hasten through without the benefit of public notice. And this meeting was properly noted.
I wanted you to reiterate that, because some of the nasty emails I've been getting were saying I did that. I want to make sure it goes by Roberts rules.
Point of legal clarification.
Can I, can I complete my, my discussion?
Okay. Commissioner Castillo, finish your amendment.
Thank you very much. So as I was saying, one of the two things cannot stand together. Either the charter is eviscerated, which would happen if we called for a November meeting now, uh, uh, election now, without challenging the Supervisor of Elections, or the charter language is correct and, uh, the Supervisor of Elections has, has made an error in his judgment about the August election issue. But they cannot stand together. Our charter says that a, an interim may not be appointed for more than 180 days. And if you go with the November election, it's well beyond the 180 days if the election occurs in April. Do you understand? So one of the two has to change. They are mutually exclusive and they cannot exist together. I am very pleased that the motion takes us out of this uncomfortable danger zone of March.
Commissioner?
However?
Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner Schwartz? Let him finish.
However?
Let him finish.
It's been twisted.
And, and it does, it takes us out of March. However, however?
Commissioner Castillo, finish your amendment, please.
However, November is not a decision that we should make now, we should make now. We have a duty to the charter, to defend it, and that can only be done by asking the proper authorities whether or not the determination made by the Supervisor of Elections is appropriate. And so my amendment would be that the, uh, to, to, to the motion would be as follows.
We already did it.
That the, uh, that the election be held in August or November, that the qualifying period be the customary qualifying period for either, and that the city attorney be directed to go to the proper authorities to find out whether or not the supervisor's, uh, policy about August is appropriate. That would be my amendment.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, I second it. So I'd like to have a conversation.
Commissioner Good, second amendment? Discussion on the amendment.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? I, I just have a question. I mean, uh, Commissioner Castillo is referencing customary, uh, qualifying dates. What, what is customary qualifying dates?
That's what we're looking for. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. If, uh, if an election were to be held in August, the qualifying dates for the August election, as far as I know, at this particular point would be in June? April, actually, it moves it up to, it's, it's April, and then for, uh, November, it would be in September. All right?
So, um, what, so you're saying the customary, so you're, you're basically saying that there is a 60-day period for qualifying?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you're?
No, it's for the election.
So for quali, I mean, I mean, you're giving dates, but I mean, you're saying it's 60 days, right?
They're, they're generated by statute. The dates for qualific, the, the dates for elections and the qualifications are set forth in state law. I don't have them in front of me, but we can get the information directly, but I, there, there are separate qualifying periods for both elections.
Point of legal inquiry, good. Uh, City Attorney? Commissioner Good asks a great question, but this is a special election that is not can, that, that is not provided in 101.75. It's explicitly, special elections are not a part of normal cycled elections. So it cannot be, a, as, as you're saying, if you're running for state senate, there's a qualifying period. If you're running for judge, there's a qualifying period. If you're running for sheriff, there's a qualifying period. But if there's a special election to fill a seat, there's no, there's no statute of when that is.
Okay. Commissioner Good, continue.
So, okay, and, and very good. And that, I guess, is part of, um, what our current charter is making reference to is that when we do know, when, when there is a vacancy, that we would set by resolution what we're going to do next, which would be, I guess, setting qualifying periods and things like that. Is that correct?
If, if, if I may, so Commissioner McCloskey? If, if I may, so, Commissioner McCloskey, in 2010, noted that there was a Charter defect when it came to vacancy. This, when qualifying periods will be held for special elections, can only be fixed with a ballot item of our city Charter. And we will not have ballot access in August, it will be November. We have a Charter Review Board that is finishing up its work. There will be four elected officials in April, and it's going to take three elected officials to place those items on the ballot. I think your question and inquiry, since it's guaranteed that you're going to be here in April, but there's no guarantee that any of the four of us will be. Well, certainly, with, with trying, Mayor Ordis will not be. So, Commissioner Good, you may be the only one left.
All right. Let's, all right, let's, so.
I mean, I mean, that's just the reality of it, right?
All right, Commissioner Schwartz. So, all right, Commissioner Good, continue with your discussion, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, so, Mr. Attorney, if I may, is there any statutory guidance on what is, what is appropriate for a qualifying period for municipal?
City Attorney?
The answer is yes. There are several special acts applicable in Broward County. The one that was being referred to earlier is Chapter 2005-318, which reads as follows: For any municipal elections held in Broward County in March of a calendar year, candidates for office in such election shall file such papers and pay such fees as may be required by law with the applicable municipal clerk no earlier than noon on the first workday in January, nor later than the seventh day following the first workday in January of the calendar year in which the election is to be held. For any municipal election held in Broward County in November of a calendar year, candidates for office in such election shall file such papers and pay such fees as may be required by law with the applicable municipal clerk no earlier than noon on the first workday in September, nor later than noon on the seventh day following the first workday in September of the calendar year in which the election is to be held. This special act follows several others in Broward County that go back to 1974, 75, 76. This is a 2005 bill that, that made uniform the qualification periods for municipal elections as well as for the issue of, um, November election. So, the customary issue is in, is in that statute. That custom, which is referred to as a customary issue, is, is an item which can be looked at, as earlier discussed by the Commission, under the state statute, which was cited too, which is the, uh, Section 10175, which does permit local governments to make changes by ordinance. By ordinance, yes. So, as, as read into the record, Commissioner, correct?
Um, okay, so, so we do have guidance in sense of statutory requirements or statutory language, that we would do it on September if we did a November election, but you're saying at the same time, though, that the city can change that through ordinance, same way that the city is able to change the date of, within 180 days, outside 180 days, by allowing a November election.
Mayor, respond, Mayor.
I, please?
The, the comment was made, definitionally, as to what customary meant, and to respond, not just custom, but the special act that applies to local elections in Broward County within, within the county are provided for in the stat, in the section I read to you, which is known as Chapter 2005-318, which, when you read that, that's, those are the quote customary required dates, which could otherwise be considered for change, or can be modified by the state statute that I cited earlier, which could change that.
Okay. So, we talked about the March, we talked about the November. Now, let's talk about the August for a moment. Is there statutory language that speaks to if there's an August election?
Not in the special acts.
So, what would give, so how would that date, then, the qualifying?
Try to speak to the amendment, please.
The issue is that an August date is not a typically available date or a typical municipal election date, which is referred to in the special act as November or in March. That is clearly in the statute. But to the extent that there have been August elections in the past, this Commission has by appropriate ordinance modified that and provided for a, a qualifying period and a special election date in August.
So, we've done that by ordinance, then, for August elections?
Have we not?
Okay. So, I, um...
If you will, if I can just clarify for the record, it was done in 2020 by resolution because the August election was on the same day as the, as the election that was conducted for the city. So, there's no need to do an ordinance, resolution.
And typically, when we've done August elections, well, how much time did we give for qualifying periods?
60 days before the election.
May, may I? City Attorney?
2020 was in June.
Mm-hmm. And then... City Attorney, we're going to get all the thing on the record by the legal authorities. Commissioner Schwartz, I'm sorry. Okay, Commissioner Good, continue.
So, okay, um, so that leaves, I'm, I'm still kind of left with a perplexed, um, question, then. If we have a qualifying period prior to an act, the, the date of a vacancy, are we in violation of the Charter?
Mayor, respond, Mayor?
City Attorney?
We published our memorandum on December the 22nd. It's a public record, it's in the backup, and it's been available for public consumption and review. We have opined in that document that the vacancy in connection with the District Four seat is a prospective in futuro, in the future vacancy. To that extent, that seat, in our opinion, based upon our review of both case law and statutes, is prospective in nature and follows the provisions of 99.012, the statute which says that the office is deemed vacant upon the effective date of the resignation submitted by the official in his or her letter of resignation. And that is our opinion, which we provided in the memorandum.
All right.
And, and in your memorandum, you had indicated that you differ from the opinion that is provided from the Supervisor of Elections office, is that correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay. So, sounds like there could be a violation, a potential violation of our Charter if we are giving a qualifying period in advance of the vacancy.
City Attorney?
Certainly, anyone who would otherwise dispute that could challenge the decision.
Because our Charter says we don't, we don't take action until the vacancy occurs.
We've given our legal opinion, which we stand by, which indicates that the vacancy is prospective in nature. To the extent that the Commission were to schedule an election in March, we raised that issue and disposed of it as best we could in our memorandum. We clearly have a distinct difference between our colleagues at the, at the County Attorney's Office, and have so expressed that. They differ. They believe that the filing of the letter itself causes the vacancy occur, and under their reading of certain case decisions and other precedent, that the seat could be filled in March, and that's when the Supervisor offered up the option in March or November, but not in August.
Okay. So, I, to my colleagues, I will tell you that in, in regards to the amendment, it's basically a two-part amendment in that, one, we ask the Election Division.
It's a single, it's a single amendment. City Attorney, will you reiterate the amendment, please?
But, well, if I'm, and again, I can't...
For the clerk?
The clerk can restate what the item...
The amendment?
Commissioner Castillo has made an amendment, has proposed an amendment to the main motion filed by Commissioner Schwartz. Essentially, that motion would suggest holding the elections either in August or in November, in, in applying the customary dates to qualifications, and to, and to direct our office to make a request, if at all possible, to the Division of Elections for a legal opinion referencing the Supervisor's denial of access in August.
Okay, Commissioner Good, you got that?
Uh, yes, so, it, it's, it's, there's two elements within that motion, or the amendment, that, one of which I'm very, very, I'm strongly in favor of, which is writing to the Election Division to get an interpretation of the Supervisor of Elections' decision not to give us a August access.
Mm-hmm.
That I firmly believe, and I see that actually as sort of a local attack on our home rule authority. So, I, I, I am fully in favor of that. The second thing is the, the qualifying period. I would, I would actually make another amendment, or a friendly amendment, if it would be accepted, is that the qualifying period be not determined until we also ask the Election Division for some guidance on what would be an appropriate qualifying period if we choose to hold an election in November.
I'll accept that. And it's a, there's a friendly amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castillo. Discussion on the friendly amendment. Call the rule, please, City Clerk.
What are we voting on?
The Second Amendment.
Well, I...
It's a subset, it's a second, there was amendment in front of us, you made another amendment, correct?
Mr. Mayor?
You made, did you make another amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, just the housekeeping issue, Mayor. Under Chapter 106, which is part of the state election code, the request would come through the City Clerk, who is, in fact, the local Supervisor of Elections under state law for local elections. So, if you were to adopt any motion requesting a DEO from Tallahassee, it would be coming from, we would, we would prepare it for the Clerk's office, but it would be coming from the City Clerk. Just to clarify.
So, the Second Amendment is okay, correct? City Attorney? The motion in front of us now is a friendly amendment.
If, if the Commission will clarify, we, I'd appreciate that, because I was having a change with you otherwise.
Please clarify, Commissioner Good.
So, so, the, the friendly amendment would be that we do not determine a qualifying period until we get guidance from the Election Division. So, that letter would incorporate not just asking about the SOE decision, but it would also be asking about guidance for an appropriate qualifying period if there is an election in November.
Okay.
So, so...
Further, further discussion on the friendly, further discussion on the friendly amendment.
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Thank, thank you.
Parliamentary point?
Vice Mayor, you're up.
Can I have a parliamentary point?
You've been speaking, the Vice Mayor hasn't spoken.
I have a parliamentary point.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
You're going to ignore parliamentary point of order.
City Attorney?
Where is it?
Are we okay here?
You're going to ignore parliamentary point of order.
Here. What's the question, Mr. Mayor? I apologize.
I'm making a parliamentary point of order.
Commissioner Castillo's asking for a parliamentary procedure, question.
What's, what's the question? I'll have to try to answer it.
The question is that the friendly amendment has been seconded, so the amendment has been changed. There's no need to vote on the friendly amendment.
Oh, yes, there is.
If it's friendly, then it's still friendly.
That's right.
So, we're voting on a friendly amendment, and then we're going to vote on the amendment?
The friendly amendment, if it's not objected to by the maker of the motion, becomes part of the, the, part of the alternate motion.
That's Roberts rules.
So, we only have, so we have to vote on the friendly amendment and then the amendment?
No, the friendly amendment's accepted because it's friendly.
The friendly amendment's accepted, so we're not voting on the friendly amendment.
We're voting on a friendly amendment.
No, we're not. He just said no.
City Attorney, there was a friendly amendment made, are we voting on that?
If there is a friendly amendment which is accepted by the maker of the motion, it's not adverse, therefore does not require a vote.
Right.
But the, but the amendment that you go after, Commissioner, does require a vote.
Has to be voted, right.
The difference is that this amendment with the friendly modification maintains the request, maintains the destination for a November election.
Right.
However, it's, it's, it's subject to the offering and requesting of an opinion from the Division of Elections.
Right.
Vice Mayor?
Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, I apologize to you, but I just want to make sure the record is quite clear.
Yeah, me too.
The, the section in 106 is, 106.22, and that is the following, it says, for the record, the, find it, there it is. The Division of Elections shall provide advisory opinions when requested by any Supervisor of Elections, candidate, local officer having election-related duties, political party, affiliated party, committee, political committee, or other person or organization engaged in political activity relating to any provisions or possible violations of the Florida election laws with respect to actions such Supervisor, candidate, local officer having election-related duties, political party, affiliated party, committee, et cetera, et cetera. Requests for advisory opinions must be submitted in accordance with the rules adopted by the Department of State. A written record of all such opinions issued by the Division sequentially numbered, dated and indexed by subject matter shall be retained. A copy shall be sent to the said person or organization upon request. Any such person or organization acting in good faith upon such an advisory opinion shall not be subject to any criminal penalty provided in this chapter. The opinion, until amended or revoked, shall be binding on any person, in this case, the City Clerk, or organization who sought the opinion or with reference to whom the opinion was sought unless material facts were omitted or misstated in the request for the Advisor Opinion. The statute was last, last modified in 2013 and was established in the year 1973.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. City Attorney? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, City Attorney, I have a question. I thought that I read, when I was doing my research on this, I thought that I read that the, that the city actually has control over or is required to set qualifying dates. Is that not the language that I read?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't hear that part. Forgive me, please. I know your, your voice is not perfect.
I'm sorry.
Tonight.
Sorry.
It's perfect, but just not tonight.
I thought, I thought that in my, my research of, of all of this, that I read that, in fact, it is the city that actually sets the qualifying dates. Was that not the language that I read?
The qualifying dates are set by a special act.
Right, but that's city...
For, 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 for a general election, for a special election, the answer is yes, the Commission does get the same date.
The Commission would set those dates.
Yes, that's correct.
So, so what we're talking about is the possibility, then, of a special election, where in fact, the Commission would have the authority and responsibility to set those dates.
It would be a special election within a general election, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, on the special, on the, on the amendment, further discussion. Here in, on call the rule, please, City Clerk.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Schwartz, Commissioner Castillo, we're ready to vote on the amendment.
Yes, I know. Uh, uh, the city, the City Attorney has indicated to me that, however remote, the chance is possible that this item, because it affects my potential election, could be a, claim to be a conflict or create an appearance of impropriety. And so, while I am free to make amendments, and while I am free to engage in discussion, I will be abstaining from all votes on this matter. Thank you.
City Attorney?
City Attorney, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Then we get a vote on it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's procedural. Commissioner Castillo has invoked, and he has that we all have the same, same authority if there's a question of financial gain or loss, or some improprietary thing, even perception, not reality, but just perception, that you can recuse yourself from, or abstaining from voting, which requires Form 8A to be filed at the next, at, at, at the next, within how many days, or is it at the next meeting?
15.
15 days into the Clerk's office.
8B, to Form, Form 8B, it has to be filed within 15 days.
8B to the City Clerk.
And it gets filed in the minutes, the minutes of the next meeting.
And then it gets filed in the minutes, so when we approve the minutes on the 17th of January, it's in there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. City Clerk, call the rule, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
I have to stay.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Vice Mayor, title? No. If they order?
No. All right, the amendment fails, we're on the original motion.
I'll move the question, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I do have a question, just for clarification.
Sorry?
I have a question for clarification.
Question for clarification.
So, what we are voting on is a, we're directing the Attorney, yeah, well...
I'll be at the back. No, 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 Commissioner Schwartz. City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor.
Re-
Mr. Mayor?
State the motion.
Yes. I'm sorry, interruption, but to the extent that the, that the substitute or amended motion did not pass-
Correct.
For the reasons set forth on the record, you now have before you the main motion, which is yet to be voted on by the commission.
Correct.
Let me be very clear, and you were very clear with me, that when you scheduled this meeting, you did so in, in respect for the sunshine law. There's a section of the sunshine law, which is 286.0114, that says the public has a right to be heard before the commission makes any final decision on any matter.
Yeah.
So, to the extent that folks have come out tonight to be heard, you have an obligation under the statute to give them an opportunity, limited by the rules of procedure and engagement of the city commission.
I understand that.
I know.
I had a couple of papers here talking about-
But, but just, just-
A couple of papers talking about the March election. This is not the motion. We have a different motion now on the floor, correct?
You have a right to speak on that.
Yeah, correct.
The, the answer is the public has a right to be heard.
Oh, I'm, I'm asking if there's any other discussion, I ask for a prior.
The answer is, is that the, the main motion that was filed, that was offered by the, uh, is on the floor at the moment, is, is subject to further debate by the commission and vote and public comment.
Let's bring it down to where we have to be.
Mayor, can I say something?
There's a motion on the floor, it's the main motion. I'm asking for further discussion from the commission or the audience, that's what you're here for. Vice mayor, go ahead first, before we ask them the others.
Thank you, thank you, mayor. And I apologize to you all for my voice, I'm still kind of fighting this bronchitis or whatever it is, but I apologize. Um, I just, I, I wanted to, uh, say that in fact, this meeting tonight, there's been an awful lot of, uh, comments all over the place about this whole situation, and it became very evident to me at our last meeting, that in fact, it was very necessary that we actually hold this meeting, so that in fact, um, correct information could be put out there, questions could get asked and, and answered, because it seemed as though there was, there was not, um, always, uh, correct, whether intentional or not intentional, that was floating out there, that, um, you know, there were, there were under the table dealings and all kinds of things going on, which is absolutely ridiculous, but just comments about, um, you know, not having enough information, uh, to be able to make decisions, so I think in fact, and I think that tonight's meeting in fact, just really upholds that, that that was a, that that was a good request, um, that we made to have this meeting tonight, in order for folks, I, you know, got to know an inconvenience to come out at holiday time. We would have probably tried to, wanted to have a different time, but statute, the, the, the advice was that it had to be at a certain period of time, in order for it to, to, to fly, and, um, and so, again, I just, I just want to say to you all that it, it, to me, the questions that are asked tonight, and I'm sure more that will be asked, uh, as we continue on, only just proves that in fact this meeting was very necessary in order to, um, uh, make decisions and to move forward, so thank you all.
Thank you. All right, any discussion on the main motion?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
Yes, sir?
Would you please read the motion as fast?
Sure, city clerk?
Yeah.
City clerk?
Uh, a motion for, um, November-
No, ma'am.
No, no, no.
No.
We're on the main motion now. City attorney, can you help out with that?
The ma- mayor, if you will, I, I'll try to be, be helpful as best as I can. The motion was ma- and Commissioner Schwartz certainly can speak for himself, but the motion was to essentially, uh, schedule a, a special election for November of twenty-
City attorney, may I?
Yep, I'd be happy to, sir.
Please, let the city attorney re- no.
I want the record to be clear.
No, no, let the city attorney read the motion, we had a-
I'm trying to get him to do that.
No, the city attorney's that. City attorney, please complete-
Mr. Mayor, for, for, forgive my, my indiscretion, but if the commissioner made the motion, perhaps his, his statement of that fact would be helpful.
Thank you. Motion to direct the city attorney's office to draft an ordinance for first reading on January 17th, 2024 pursuant to section 101.75 Florida statute, setting a special election to fill the District Four vacancy concurrent with the November 5, 2024 general election, and to establish a qualifying period for the special election to run from noon on March 1, 2024, through noon on March 15, 2024.
Okay, you got that? Got that for the official record, city clerk?
March, March 1 to when?
City clerk? Got that for the official record?
March 1 to 1?
Okay, sir, did you want to speak on that motion? David, come on up, please, you got three minutes, and Jesse, I need your name and address, please. Turn the mic on, please.
My name is David Brubeck, and I reside at 5801 Southwest 199 Avenue.
Three minutes.
For the record, Ms. Seifel, would you please, uh, specify the person who's a legal counsel and advice you're relying upon for this meeting having to happen today?
City attorney, I said, I mean, vice mayor.
Yes, would you please specify the person, you said that, that you received advice, that it had, this meeting had to happen today in the middle of the holidays, and I wanted you to specify who gave you that advice. I'd also like for, um-
Hold on, you want, you want to answer that question?
The answer, the answer-
Go ahead. Vice mayor.
City attorney. It's my understanding that, that there had, there was a time period of when this had to happen, and it was all with the language of as if when-
Correct.
That would first have to happen, which would be the, um, the resignation, resigned to run letter that was, that was submitted by Commissioner Castillo, because that has to happen first.
So, Mr. Gorn is giving, providing the advice?
Hold on, she's giving her answer, please.
So, my understand, that was my understanding, was that that had to happen first, and once that happened, then that going forward, we would need to know, and given the fact also that the supervisor of elections office stood right where you're standing a couple of meetings ago, and told us there would be no August election, that led me then to believe that we needed to have some, some direction, because we didn't, we, we needed to have direction on what options-
You're using all my time.
Let me finish, please.
Sir?
What options are, would be still available to us legally, and, and however we wanted to go forward, so that was, that was the reason for that.
Mr. Gorn, would you please confirm that it was your opinion, legal opinion that supports her?
I'll be happy to answer the mayor's direction, because that represents the commission, be happy to answer them.
Mr. Schwartz, is there precedent for moving the election up like this? Can you provide one?
Um, I'm not sure what time you arrived, but I went through, um, a fifteen minute presentation of, uh, multiple elections that have been moved over the period of years-
In the city president, Pembroke Pines.
In the city Pembroke Pines, just, two, um, 2004, 2008, 2012, 2011, 2020.
I'm opposed to this, I think, um-
There's seen as well.
It sets a danger, dangerous precedent, I think it's also, uh, especially sensitivity at a time when we have the mayor outgoing, when there could be perhaps, uh, concerns for him leaving the office, I think it's, uh, it's, it's not a good time, and I, I'm very much vehemently opposed to any early resignation or any requirement, um, from Mr. Castillo that is, uh, any change.
No, 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 no.
That's required by law, it's required.
The resignation is, 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 yes.
Please, then. All right, thank you, sir.
Um, so Mr. Gorn, will you answer the question, uh, directed by the mayor, or Mr. Mayor, will you direct him, I still have a few seconds left?
If the commission were to ask me the question, sir, I would tell them the same answer to you as I told them earlier in the beginning of the meeting. This meeting is, is legally conducted under Florida statutes and under city charter and city code requirements, it is a legally enforceable meeting and binding under Florida law.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion. Yes, come on up, Ms. Brubeck. Name, address, you'll have three minutes, please.
My name is Scott Burnett, 19346 Southwest Fifth Street, proud resident of District Four. Um, first of all, uh, to address Commissioner Seifel, Commissioner Schwartz, you've expressed in previous meetings-
Vice mayor Seifel.
Vice mayor Seifel, and Commissioner Schwartz, and mayor, um, you've expressed in previous meetings that the people of District Four are asking to move up this process to the March election to fill the vacancies of, of District Four. Um, Commissioner Schwartz has been asking, saying that in previous meetings, that you even were asking, you were saying you were getting commentary from people of District Four, that, um, we wanted our representative to resign early. Um, I'm here to say, um, I've talked with a lot of residents in District Four, um, we like our commissioner, we want him in office, we are not asking for this, and to be quite honest with you, if, if Commissioner Castillo were to lose the election, which, you know, it doesn't look like that's going to happen, we would want him back in office as soon as possible. Now, the charter, section 3.11 about vacancies, um, you know, it's right there in the charter, I have it right here, that, you know, the commissioners have the right to appoint a commissioner, um, if he vacates the office, but the thing is, is he's sitting right there, you're all sitting in your seats, there's no vacant seat right now. These things are only triggered, as my understanding, when there is indeed a vacancy. His resignation, proposed resignation, is on the election in March, so that seat is filled right now, and you're asking us to make a decision about a seat that's currently filled by the, the commissioner. Um, the other part of this is, I'm a proud citizen of this United States, and the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States, uh, has the due process clause, which prohibits state and local governments from depriving persons of life, liberty, or property without fair procedure. There needs to be a due process for this. We need to have the ability to have things happen in the normal course of those activities, and the normal course of activities in the past has been when someone resigns, and when that seat is indeed vacant, that's the time for the, the commission to act on these things and to talk about this, and on top of that, it's my understanding that with the supervisor of elections, that August determination, right now is only an opinion, I believe you as the commission need to exhaust all possibilities, because you know what, if we do indeed have a vacant in District Four, yes, we want to have someone who we can elect with due process, and if August is available, we should pursue that, and you know what, we have great legal counsel here, and I hope you would respect that, and we should, we should do that, so I don't understand why you're saying no to this right now, it doesn't make sense to me.
We always respect our counsel, thank you.
Mayor? Mayor, can I ask-
Vice mayor, go ahead.
Mayor, can I ask what-
Vice mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I don't, I don't respond to you, because I don't normally, um, agree with a lot of the things that you say, and I just don't want the bantering back and, back and forth on it. I do read, I do read, and I do take, uh, you, your opinions, um, I, I do put measure into them and listen to them carefully. Um, and, again, the, the reason for this meeting tonight, again, uh, it's pretty obvious that there were, just from tonight's discussion, a lot of, uh, um, issues that needed to be discussed with, with many options, as, uh, what if this happened, what if that happened, what was the date of this, what were the numbers? So I think that tonight's meeting has been a good meeting, in fact, that we have gotten, we have gotten some, um, better information, and, and, and you, you mentioned residents , uh, writing in and saying, um, uh, they still want to have an August, you know, election, they still want to have, so yes, I mean, I've read, obviously I've read those, I have read those, and by going on the fact that in, it was not ever brought up prior to this, prior to tonight, to even ask, um, or give direction to city attorney, uh, to see about the, the supervisor, um, how we might handle changing, changing that, that his, his constitutional officer authority to run his office, and so, um, I'm, I'm not sure that that would happen, but I do know that listening to and reading what the re- the residents have written, that they are, they, they still have not gotten, and I hope a lot of them are watching tonight, and that tomorrow's printouts on all of the social media out there will in fact bring forward to them that at this point, there is no August, and so then, without hap- while they're, at this point, there is no August-
It's an opinion, correct? By the supervisor of elections? It's just an opinion?
Let me finish, let me finish what I'm saying to you. At this point, we've been told, and it's been told to our attorneys, it's been put in writing to our attorneys, that, that his choice, it's his choice to run his office, that there will not be a municipal election in, 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 in August. So, having that confronting us, then where do we go? What's the right road to take on this, that, that keeps us in compliance with what's the right thing to do? What's the, um, what does our charter say, what do legal, what do other opinions give us direction on, and I, again, I want to say, and this is going to be the end of, end of what I'm saying, is that I think tonight's meeting, well, again, I apologize that it was an inconvenience and the timing of it, the timing, I think, was answered as to why it was when it was, unfortunately, um, but I think tonight's meeting certainly brought forward, um, better information, I think, for a lot of the folks out there that are still thinking that, 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 at this, at this point, at this point, that August is an option, which it clearly is not at this point, I'm not, I'm, and I'm not saying that there shouldn't be some more discussion about that, but at this point, there is not.
I'm saying, let's give it a shot.
Mayor?
Okay.
Mayor?
Are you done? Are you done?
I, well, not yet.
Mayor?
You had your three minutes, it's up, sir.
Mayor?
Commissioner?
I wanted to ask him a question.
Commissioner, stand by.
Okay.
Your time is up. Commissioner Castillo wants to ask you a question.
Yes, I would love to answer. So, what you see happening-
I would love to answer.
So, what you see happening right here, is the calling of the November election, which was originally published as a March election, and the reason for that is simple. Um, the, the, the March scheme was untenable, so we are now moving that to November, that's progress, but the purpose, it seems to me, um, for, uh, inserting this unusual, uh, qualifying period of, you know, of, uh, March 1st of 2004 to March 15th, 2004, is to keep me from being able to apply, should I lose the election in, um, in March, and potentially to try and encourage someone else who's running for mayor to run for another seat. If I'm, that's how it seems to me.
City attorney?
And, and the sinister nature of that-
City attorney?
Will not go away.
City attorney, yes, mayor.
And people will see that for what it is.
Commissioner? Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
That is unfair.
I'm sorry, that's the way it seems to the whole city.
City attorney?
Yes, mayor.
That's the way it seems, and, and the thing about that is-
City commissioner.
If either of those happens, it will be impossible, it will be impossible-
Who would like, who's the next speaker, please?
To cleanse-
Who's the next speaker, please?
He was going to ask me a question.
No, I'm calling him out of board.
Oh, I see.
I'm calling him out of board, the statement he just made.
Okay.
That's what's going on.
Next, commissioner, who else would like to speak? Yes, sir?
So, let's get right-
Did you name, address, and you have three minutes, sorry.
............ Sorry? ......... Mayor, do, I, I don't-
Thomas Pichurro, 1511 Northwest 114th Avenue.
Go ahead.
Um, what was the date of Jack McCloskey talking about the fact that this wasn't issued?
Uh, June 2010.
June 2010. Has there ever been from the charter review committee, a, a referendum to change it?
Yeah, the voters voted in November of 12 to allow, uh, the date, if I may, mayor, uh, the, the, the 180 days of vacancies, uh, has been the same for over forty years. The one thing that the commission did not have the ability to do, was to temporarily appoint in between the resignation and the actual election. So, the Jack McCloskey, um, comment, uh, was ratified by the voters in November of 2012.
Okay, so they only allowed for an appointment of 180 days.
And that was invoked, uh, when Carl Schechter had resigned, uh-
Right, but the problem that we have here, is that we have District Four running along the same time as the mayor, this has also happened before, this same situation has happened before.
Right.
Okay, so I'm sorry, guys, what this seems to me, is that the charter review committee has not addressed a systemic problem that we have that is happening right now. has not addressed a systemic problem that we have that is happening right now. It is going to happen again. It's happening again now. It's happened in the past. Why is this a problem?
You should run for general review.
I'm, I'm not, well, maybe I will, sir, because obviously they're not doing their job. Okay? And, and let me be frank here. Let me be frank here. Okay? The fact that we're sitting over here arguing over stuff that's happened in the past and has not been addressed by this day is, is the bigger problem. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion. Mr. Terik, Mr. Terik? Three minutes, please.
Anna Butaric, 12915 Northwest 22nd Manor.
Just pull the mic down.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. You sound better that way.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. Please, please restate your name for the record. The clerk didn't get it exactly. Tell who you are, please. Thank you.
Anna, Anna Butaric.
Thank you, Anna.
12915 Northwest 22nd Manor, Pembroke Pines, of course. First of all, I want to thank all of you for making Pembroke Pines really the best city in Florida.
Thank you.
So, but I, I have a little concern here. I came specifically because I was under the impression that you were going to kind of rush this election to fill the vacancy for District 4 in March. So that was my main concern. Even though I'm not in that district, I feel that it concerns all residents.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I had to do my own little research. And what I did come up with is that after the vacancy, you know, becomes vacant, you have to have an election no later than 180 days. So that puts us into August. Now, if you are going to move it into November, I am assuming that you are going to have to make some motion or get some permission, right?
That'll be the January.
Okay.
That's where the ordinance, where everything gets, gets wrapped up.
So, but this is the little part that is nagging at me, why the qualifying period is in March and not the customary.
Quiet, please. Quiet, please.
That's all. So that, that because I, I know nothing about.
No, no, no. You have a very good point. And your point is to, at what the rules are of this city. We will attest to the rules and stick by them. So I'm glad you're bringing it out.
Yeah.
We're going to go by that, just like people were writing me about this meeting that I called. You heard the city attorney say it had to be called. And that's why we had to do it. So I wanted to make sure everybody knows that. Go ahead, Ms. Terik.
So that was the only, that was the only concern that's nagging me, the limit of the qualifying period.
Okay.
But that's all. Thank you so much. You all have a good night.
All right. This, we're getting there. How are you tonight?
I'm sore. I'm Susan Snyder. I'm, I live at 730 Southwest 191st Avenue in Pembroke Pines. Season greetings to you all, mayor, commissioners, city managers, city attorneys, city clerk, oh, no, city clerk today. And fellow Pembroke Pines residents, I hope to be brief. I'm a regular citizen and yikes, what a meeting. I'm, I tried to find the logic here. So this person that just spoke, I thought it was 60 days before that you need, so if the election is going to be in August, 60 days before.
Right.
Right? 60 days before.
Continue, please.
Not much. Thanks. Okay. So maybe you guys will all talk about this. In a year of global and regional disappointments, as well as local wins for an environmental green space, you have all kept things interesting. Thank you for that. You each have unique ways of gaining attention and advantage in this desirable city full of benefits and freedoms. It is important to remember that freedom is on one side of the scale. The other side of the scale is responsibility. And especially in a democracy, responsibility must weigh a balance against privilege. You have the privilege, rights and freedom bestowed by our votes. You have the responsibility to act in our interest.
I've been, excuse me, but I've been doing this for 28 years.
It is in the best interest of this beautiful city to afford District 4 constituents the same election rights as the other three districts. It is easy to think, what is the purpose of this special meeting, other than to deprive the city commissioner and his constituents the right to serve his remain, two year remaining years in office, sorry. The right to serve his two remaining years of service, should he not be elected mayor, thereby also depriving his constituents, us, his representation, they voted for him to serve. It would be easy to think that. In the year to come, we can hope for change in many things. And I hear some changes starting to be discussed, good, yay, but not for reduction in our rights, nor your abdication of responsibility. You know better. So I was going to say vote no to a March election. I think we got this here, for District 4 commissioner's seat. It is, that was an inequitable proposal and you had the responsibility to object it and, to object to it. And thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, for that. There probably are other people who want to speak. That's what I wanted to say for your information. If your continued discourse is lengthy, I will need to leave before you, your final vote. I have a hospital procedure scheduled for 6:00 AM tomorrow. So need to leave at 5:15 from my home. Please don't take my departure as any lack of concern for this issue or impatience with the discussion. But perhaps know that my presence here indicates my level of concern and desire to urge you to vote for the August or November dates, please.
We appreciate, we appreciate your concern. Yes. Who, who, hold on. Who wants to, who adds to speak? One, two, three? If that's who's going to speak, then that'll be the end of it. Go ahead. We need your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, all. My name is Marcy F. Samuels. And I used to live in the beautiful city of Pembroke Pines. And I say used to. I so miss Pembroke Pines. I am now in Palm Beach County, but I'm coming back.
What?
Yes, I miss you all. Okay, I'm listening to everyone here. This has happened before. We have, I'm a lawyer. We have to follow state statute. Commissioner, I'm so sorry. But if you're going to run for mayor, you have to give up your commission seat.
I did.
No.
Commissioner?
But you cannot come back. Somebody else has to take your place.
That's fine.
Yes, yes.
Quiet.
On the state statute, somebody has.
The floor is yours to speak.
Yes. So Commissioner Schwartz, your motion is absolutely correct, in my opinion. Okay, I'm going.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, can we get a mobile, uh, mic, sir, please?
So can you help, uh?
Okay, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I got this.
You got it?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Mike, I'm good, Mike. I can, I got this.
All right.
I know you won't be able to see.
Hold on, hold on, hold on before you start.
I can't see you, Al.
Al, can you move to the side? We can't see you.
Yeah. Thank you for letting me.
All right, go ahead, Al.
Thank you for letting me come before you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Okay.
There you go.
I'm kind of a little distraught here. I come to some of these commission meetings and I have a lot of value and, and respect for all of you that sit in this commission. That's why you're appointed officials and elect. But I have a little bit of problem today because I, I feel like there's a lot of, well, at least from my end, how we're moving our election months around. There's this, this disheartening information from our Board of Election Supervisors saying August, September, November, March, April. I'm completely confused as a voter in District 4, not knowing why there's a purpose right now of moving the current election system from March to November. And I know it gives us more time, which I understand that, I respect that idea. The qualifying time, I know it's 180 days, if my understanding is correct. I'm not a charter expert for the city of Pembroke Pines. I've only been here several years. But I do respect everybody's effort and all the things you do for our city to make it better. But as a voter, it is unjust, unfair. And not to really be clear, now, if I'm sitting in this room and it is going back and forth with amendments, friendly amendments, non-amendments, we're voting for no amendment, the amendment, the motion, and I understand the process, this is the process we follow here. My problem I have is, why do we just keep a consistent election cycle like we've always had in Pembroke Pines? So we don't confuse the shit out of, sorry, the hell out of our voters. But I'm definitely confused. And I need for point of clarification. Now, didn't our governor just, he's running for president, correct? Didn't he just instill a law in Tallahassee that if he doesn't make presidency, he can go back as governor for the state of Florida?
Just for him.
So how does that differ from municipality?
Direct.
And vote. Now, I'm not really clear on the two differences. What's the difference from the municipality? I'm a little confused with that, too.
Are you done, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I, I have a question.
Okay, final speaker?
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Excuse me, I have a, hold on, hold on.
I have a question for him.
Final speaker? Come on. Yes.
Because it doesn't get done what they want.
Can I make a comment to Mr. Salvi while he's still there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Al, can you?
Yes, Mr. Salvi. This, this, this started because several meetings, commission meetings ago, the supervisor of elections came before us and said, you will have no more municipal elections in any city in Broward County in the month of August. It was not something like, a lot of people are under the misinformation that the city started this or that any one of us individuals started this. That is not how it happened and you need to understand that very clearly.
Yep.
It was started when the supervisor stood right at that day with his assistant and said, no more, you know, municipal elections anywhere in Broward County in the month of, of August. And then that started the conversation between their, his, him and his attorney and staff and our, and our attorneys as to what that actually meant. And then all of, all of this has kind of now come out about that. The thing, though, Mr. Salvi, that bothers me is that tonight you all are hearing some true and factual information. Prior to this, that has not been the case out there on social media. I'm sorry to say that, that has not been the case. But thank you for being here.
There's a lot of things, Mr. Mayor, if I can just complete my conversation without being disrespectful. There's a lot of information that goes back and forth on social media. I can agree with some, disagree with others. I take it for the value that, you know, that it's well warranted. But I want to understand, and I'm sure if I'm a voter, and I'm a pretty smart voter, and I make logical choices and logical senses for the best of the community, okay? And I want the best for Pembroke Pines. I fought for every issue that has been against Pembroke Pines. But I want to see some more consistency on our elections. I want to see some of the questions answered that I'm still not clear on, like, when the appointment happened, was there a vacancy with Mr. Castillo, District 4? He, if there's a vacancy and he doesn't, God forbid, he doesn't get elected, when the appointment happens, how long is that appointment for? Well, I'm clear.
Until November. It's the, the time of the election.
Until November, sir.
And who will make the determination of who the appointee is?
The city commissioners.
Three commissioners.
Three commissioners.
The city commissioner.
For.
The city commissioner will make that appointment.
Go ahead.
So we have no saying who's going to be appointed for that seat.
It's our, it's our appointment. That's the rules.
Okay, no, I just want to be clear on the rules. And how long is that appointment for?
Only until November.
Until November.
Until November. And Jake, how was November chosen as date or the month for the election, for the new election cycle?
Thanks for asking. What, if I may, Mayor, and I'll be very brief because I, I respect, Al, I, I, I respect, I respect you for, Al, the Commissioner, District 4 Commissioner Sue Katz, District 4 Commissioner Sue Katz resigned on the 15th of December 2003. In 2007, on December 17th, 2003, the commission with the same city attorney here tonight, had a March election, the 2nd to 6th of March. Commissioner Castillo won that seat in March of 2004. Okay? So had the resignation, that's District 4 Commissioner's right, his legal right to drop the paper to the governor's office whenever he felt he wanted to do that. None of us up here had any control over that. Waited to the last possible moment to do that. Therefore, it set this sunshine-required meeting during a holiday week, which is horrendous. An option, an option that I had brought forward this past June. Resign, allow the commission to appoint. And we could have had everything even Steven, not going anywhere, and go into a March election.
Okay.
That was an option, but that's not the case now. What's in front of us now is a supervisor who is saying we can either do March or we can either do November. Because the clock ran out on us because it was dropped on the 22nd of December instead of Sue Katz's December 15th, didn't give this commission enough time to fill that spot.
Point of clarification, Mayor?
Go ahead, point, quick, quick.
So, so we've had, we've had a lot of discussion about Sue Katz and what happened 20 years ago. That was before the charter provision that allowed, that the residents passed to allow the city to replace vacancies among commissioners. That was before the Division of Elections' opinion about resign to run. That's all old history. And I, and I'm here to tell you, it's all irrelevant. What's relevant here today is that this commission is about to vote on moving that vacancy to November. Moving the vacancy to November violates the charter because it's more than 180 days. Commissioner Good couldn't have said it any better than, 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 than I did. We have a duty to appeal, or the city attorney doesn't like that word, but it, 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 it matches what, what we do. This administrative determination by the supervisor of elections about, you can't use.
All right, I trust you.
Excuse me.
We've heard it all.
Excuse me. Let me finish.
Go ahead.
You've allowed everyone else to finish. Let me finish.
You've, you've been five times.
So, 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 so the issue here is, they don't want to go to, to Tallahassee. And they don't want, uh, uh, an August election. They want a November election and they want to do the, um, the qualifying in March of this, of this coming year. And the reasons for that can only be sinister, in my opinion. Okay?
City Attorney.
Saying it just the way it is.
City Attorney.
And.
City Attorney.
Just the way.
City Attorney!
Yes, Mayor.
I'm going to object to that from that. Commissioner was elected by the people to say there's sinister going on at this commission meeting. They're trying to go by the rules. All right, Al, you're, you're okay?
But, but here's the good news. Come, come March, we're going to fix this.
Yeah, right.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Uh, I, you know, just one last thought. You know, I, uh, I, I really am kind of really disappointed here as a resident.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You're a bet. You're a bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. Your final speaker, just put the mic on, please. Mic, the mic, speak. Put the speak on. There you go.
Good evening, Mary Stevens, 1301 Northwest 192nd Terrace, Pembroke Pines, Florida 33029.
Thank you very.
I am a resident of District 4 and have been for over 25 years. I would first off like to thank each and every one of you for the wonderful job you've done for Pembroke Pines. I sincerely appreciate it. As far as calling an election in March, I was totally against it. But now we know that that's not part of the scenario or the resolution. We're looking at August and November. I think what should happen also, though, is the qualifying period should not be in March.
Right.
For an election in August or November. This doesn't make sense. The qualifying period should be, like I believe Commissioner Good was saying, about 60 days prior to the election. And I think that's what the residents want. So that's what we should be voting for. Thank you.
All right, you, you missedpoke a little bit. This motion in front of us, Ms., this motion in front of us is for November, not August. You mentioned August. That's not in the motion.
My, my understanding was that Mr. Commissioner Schwartz's motion was for moving the election to potentially November. We also talked about the potential for August, but his qualifying period was in March.
No, the motion in front of us is for November, not August.
Not potentially in.
Okay. All right.
How about the qualifying period? Is that included in that?
I still have it. That's all done by the election bureau.
Well, the qualifying period is what, what we disagree with.
That's not correct.
Okay, but we can do that. But the.
That's not correct.
The motion in front of us. Read the motion again, please, City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear.
Shh.
The, the motion includes a qualifying period. That's different than the qualifying period currently in the special act, but can be done under the state law that was cited to you earlier in the conversation. So it is a, the motion includes a November, a special election during the general election of November with a qualifying period specifically to begin on March 1 at noon through noon on March 15. And the, it would be required, as you know, by ordinance to come back on the 17th of January. All right?
That's what we, that's what myself and my local residents that I've talked to that aren't here tonight, we don't like that, we don't like that qualification period. The qualification period needs to be shortly before the election, not in March.
Right. City, City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
What are the ramifications or what can be done by this, as she's asking?
To restate the commentary earlier this evening, Mr. Mayor, the issue is there, if there is a state statute in place, 101.75 subsection 3, which permits this local government, if it so chooses for a special election, essentially notwithstanding any provision of local law or municipal charter, the governing body of the municipality made by ordinance, and that's what the motion includes, move the date of any municipal election to a date concurrent with any statewide or countywide election. The dates for qualifying for the election moved by the passage of such ordinance shall be specifically provided for in the ordinance. You, if this motion is adopted by a majority of the commission, we will draft an ordinance and bring it back to you for first reading on the 17th of January. It requires two public readings by state statute with a public hearing attendant to the second public, the second public review.
Okay. Got it. All right.
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment.
Call a motion, please.
I'd like to make an amendment.
City clerk?
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move that the qualifying period occur during the customary time for the November election, which would be approximately 60 days before the election period.
Point of Parliament.
Commissioner, shh, folks, please. Commissioner Schwartz?
Uh, they, uh, under, under.
Is there a second to the motion?
Commissioner Schwartz, you have a point?
City Attorney, uh, this, uh, this amendment made by the commissioner appears to be identical to the non prevailing side of a motion that was already taken. Therefore.
Point of order, City Attorney?
There is a six month, uh.
It's a different motion.
City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is that correct?
The mayor would have to make a decision whether or not the motion is on the same subject that matter or if it's an, if it's a different motion.
My motion, my motion was, was much more complicated than that and it failed. This is a much simpler motion and it's in order. And the question should be, is there a second?
Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that for you.
All right. Discussion?
So, Mr. Mayor, again, I.
Mr. Good?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was just asking, again, a friendly amendment to the amendment.
Yeah, I would just ask, again, a friendly amendment to the amendment, that we would, we would not set the, um, the qualifying period until we have a better understanding of guidance for the qualifying period.
Again, a point of parliamentary procedure, the Commissioner was not on the prevailing side.
Folks, everybody wants to get it done right. You can't just do what you want to do, you gotta do it right. The City Attorney has reiterated what we have to do, and what we have to do right. That's what we go by. We can't just go by what we want to do. So, it's, we're going by our charter. We're going by our charter. We're going by, I understand, no. The opinion was by law, City Attorney?
M- Mr. Mayor, the object of the discussion at the moment is Commissioner Castillo's amended motion to the main motion, which is, which is on the floor for consideration. Commissioner Good seconded it with a, with a conversation piece that appeared to not, uh, was not accepted by the, the maker of the motion.
All right, further discussion. Any amendment? Call a roll, any amendment, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
I abstain.
Hold on, can he abstain, there's any?
The answer is yes, he can. He stated on the record already.
All right, on the record, he abstained.
So is that, is that two forms or just one?
Two.
Um. If there's a vote being taken, it would be a second form, A B. So there's going to be two files within fifteen days.
Okay.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
No.
Vice Mayor Siple?
No.
Do you hear orders?
No. All right, on the main, on the main motion, call a roll, City Clerk.
Can I ask? Mr. Mayor, I have a question to ask for the main motion, please. So, um, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
City Attorney?
So we are, uh, establishing a qualifying period outside of a hundred and eighty days. Um, and because our charter says we can't really take any action until, um, well, it doesn't say that we can't take, because we're trying to do that now, but the charter basically says, once the vacancy is realized, then we would meet and do a resolution to determine what the process would be, uh, in order to fill the vacancy. Um, so the question that I have is that because the qualifying period is open more than a hundred and eighty days before the election, after, um, the vacancy is realized, can the qualifying period and/or even the election date be reestablished? In other words, can we reopen the qualifying period? And can we reestablish, uh, the election date?
City Attorney?
The election date is set by state statute. The November election is the general election. We've.
Well, a- as you stated, it was, uh, it, we have to set it by ordinance. And for some reason, let's say that there's an ability to get onto the August ballot, for instance. I mean, could, that, that could be theoretically, could it be changed?
May I respond, Mayor? The, 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 the main motion before the Commission as we speak is to actually, is to set the special election during the general minis- general election in November, and under the statute that I cited to you earlier, to set a qualifying date, both of which, which is the setting of the date and the qualifying period, are in fact consistent with section one oh one point seventy-five subsection three, which you can do as a city commission.
Thanks.
Which, but, but the question I'm saying is, is, yes, we're setting a qualifying period for March, and we are setting an election date for November. Can we change that to another ordinance later on?
City Attorney?
I suspect the answer is yes, so long as there's sufficient legal time to provide for the requirements of state law, yeah.
Okay.
Parliamentary question?
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, uh, come March or April, this Commission, however constituted, can repeal this ordinance and reset the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, qualifying dates if it wants, if it wants to?
You can repeal, the answer is generally yes, if you have an ordinance to repeal it, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. On a cl- on a call, call him.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Call a question, please, City Clerk, call, call a vote.
Commissioner Short?
The Vice Mayor asked for the motion to be read again.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Read, read the motion again, please, the main motion.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Mr. Mayor.
Got the sit.
Just, if I, if I may, just to clarify, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Commissioner's going to ask a very valid question. To the, to the, to the extent that this motion, if the ordinance is adopted, is, is adopted by the Commission, um, first reading on the seventeenth with a qualifying period of March one, strike that, noon, noon, March one through March fifteen, the challenge becomes, if you were to repeal the ordinance, people may otherwise qualified in that ordinance. That's, that's the only cha- legally.
Right.
I cannot answer what the challenges could be, but there could, there could certainly be challenges.
All right, City.
But generally speaking, without the benefit of that specific date, Commissioner Good is correct.
All right, City Clerk?
And by the way, Commissioner Castillo is correct, also on the repealer option, that's also legally accurate.
City Clerk? Can't hear you. Can we get a portable mic or something, sir?
But so much to section.
Because it's the law.
One oh one point.
City Clerk, go ahead.
One oh one point seven five Florida statute, setting the special election to fill the district.
That is, that is not the motion.
Yeah, let, uh, hold, let's, folks, City Attorney, can you help us with the motion, please?
May I, may I try to, I, I think Commissioner Schwartz has said it several times, I, I have it written down. May I, may I restate it if that would be appropriate? Motion.
Let's repeat the motion, so we all understand.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to direct the City Attorney's office to draft an ordinance for first reading on January seventeen, twenty twenty-four pursuant to section one oh one point seven five Florida statute, setting a special election to fill the District Four vacancy concurrent with the November five, twenty twenty-four general election, and to establish a qualifying period for the special election to run from noon on March one, twenty twenty-four, through noon on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Call, call a roll, please, City Clerk?
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Siple?
Wait, shh, hold, hold on a sec. Call a roll again, please, I didn't hear it.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Siple?
What, what did you vote? Good.
Commissioner Castillo?
I abstain.
Commissioner Good?
I am in, uh, great favor of the November election. I just feel I'm very uncomfortable with the qualifying period and the potential issues it may cause, so I am going to vote no.
Your vote?
Do you hear orders?
Oh, hold on, your vote, sir?
Yes, sir, it was, it was no.
Okay. I also am concerned about the laws, as I should be as a mayor. And I believe this leads us to the right direction, and we can always fix it. So I'm going to vote yes in the motion.
Can we vote in March?
Motion passed.
The, the, the motion just passed will have a November election.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
City Attorney? Did you hear that? You can ask the City Attorney, I'll make sure of that motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you all.
Jake, you got to say it. Brilliant.